Join us with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty to dress for all.
The agenda is principed amended will be filed so all necessary immediate actions by the council will be addressed. The agenda can be amended by proper motion. Business from the floors welcome and allotted for on our agenda. When comments from the floor are made, you will first be recognized by the mayor, second stating the name and address for the record, and third you'll have noted more than three minutes to state your common concern. There are copies of this agenda available at the back of the room. There is a sign up sheet as well, and please turn your cell phones off.
I would welcome you to January 2018, the council meeting, Tuesday, January 9th, 7:00 PM. I will take a motion to approve and amend the meeting agenda. Approve or amend?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
I would move that we pull under consent agenda items, consent agenda items 1.3 and 1.5, either for discussion at that time or to be placed under council items I and J.
The other amendments. All right, if they have amended, do I have a motion to approve? Second. All right, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. We have sheriff's report and lieutenant, before you start, I would like to recognize that this is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. And on behalf of the city and the council, we would like to have you extend to your officers and to the sheriff's department, our appreciation, in particular, as you serve us here in this community, but in general, those of you that put your lives on the line for us and sacrificed for us, and we do appreciate it, and we want to acknowledge that publicly today. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. I will certainly relay those sentiments to our staff. Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to present the sheriff's office report for December 2017, and also provide you with a few year end stats. In December, sheriff's office deputies responded to 101 calls for service in the city, and that will give us a year end total of calls for service for 1,454, which is an 80 call increase over 2016. But again, I remember the, our public safety data system wasn't collecting as accurate of numbers as we would have liked in 2016, but we are confident in our 2017 numbers. So, things are looking good there. And just a few noteworthy calls for service for the month. On the first of the month, a deputy was reported in the 19700 block of Tuttered Road. At that time, unknown persons entered a not secure garage location and stole a steel chainsaw that was there. And I just highlight that call as a reminder that there are just people out here that are seeking targets of opportunity, so just to remind the citizens to lock your own buildings and whatever you can do to safely secure your items and belongings is much appreciated by us, because unfortunately, there are people that are just out there looking for targets of opportunity and looking for unlocked vehicles, unlocked garages to make way with whatever they can. And then just another, a couple of other interesting calls. On the 17th of the month, a pursuit entered the city of Malvin on Viking Boulevard. It was started in the city of Ramsey and came through the city here. Our deputies joined in the pursuit, and ultimately, the vehicle crashed into the ditch in the 19600 block of Malvin Boulevard here. Nobody was injured, and the driver was taken into custody without incident. And it was just somebody that was up to no good and had warrants, the officer that was, tried to stop the vehicle, recognized the person and saw the bad warrants and tried to stop him and then fled, but it was, it ended without incident. And then on the 30th of the month, this is a case I wanted to highlight just to, again, how much we appreciate the public's help. Somebody called in suspicious vehicle in the 22700 block of Aldine Street. Our deputies responded to the area and found the vehicle with a single set of footprints leading off into the woods. The vehicle, when they started looking at it, had multiple different license plates on it. Those ended up being stolen. One set of license plates was stolen from Minneapolis, another set was stolen from Brooklyn Park. At the time, the deputy noted in his report, it was 1911. The deputies followed the footprints with the use of a cane iron as well, and ultimately located the male who was taken into custody. While they were doing more research on the vehicle, the vehicle itself was stolen. So, it's just a, kind of like a linking back to the first case I talked about, there's people that are out and about at all hours of the day and night that are up to no good. It wasn't an Alvin resident, it was somebody from outside of town, and they were here in a stolen vehicle with stolen license plates from multiple jurisdictions, so it's just one of those cases we highlight, just to show you sometimes the type of people we're finding more and more, how transient our criminals are now. They were, earlier in my career, criminals were very territorial, would stay in one place, and now they're getting smarter about what they do, and they'll drive from the cities to come up here, just because they know it's spread out and sparse and populated, and may or they may or may not encounter resistance. So, I just highlight that to show that there's, there's always people out and about doing things that they likely shouldn't be, and just that it can happen even here, so.
What time was that incident?
That was called in at 7:01, around 7:00 AM. So, and I will assume, obviously not having complete knowledge of that and talking to the person, I'm going to assume it was probably the end of their evening, when this, they usually go out late and stay out until daylight or so, and then head back and do, kind of the opposite of what the rest of the world does. And then just as a reminder, I'm sure we've all seen in the news with the extreme cold temperatures, the different fire dangers that are out there with the use of space heaters, and then with space heaters and stuff, the carbon monoxide issues. We've been very fortunate around here, but just, I just use it as a reminder, if you talk to people and see them using stuff, just make sure and do it safely, that way we can avoid, avoid some tragedy, because we see it in the news and see it, and it happens every year, but just a friend around here. So, that's all I have.
Counsel, any questions for lieutenant? Thank you very much. We have no floor items tonight, so we'll move right to planning and zoning. Brent Hedberg, Greg and Linda Lindgren, request for a lot split. Motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinje.
I'll make a motion to approve the lot split with January 9th, finding some decisions, changing that decision one, as those have requested for the dedication of the 333, what really is going on?
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion, a second, discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, so we have our comp plan open house. We had 10 people that had signed the log, five people submitted responses to the survey questions. Corey had a question, how long does the council want to receive feedback regarding that open house and the potential surveys that might still be out there? And would, would we like, Corey, to have staff assemble those survey responses into a spreadsheet for our review? Number one, how long do we want to keep it open?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
I would believe that until council is to a point of making a decision that we would continue to receive feedback, whether they attended the meeting or not.
Any other opinions on that?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
But this is just, as I understand it, maybe I'm missing something, there's potential for more open houses as the plan continues to get refined. So, you know, if we wanted to close this one off, there'll be other opportunities in council meetings and special meetings and other open houses to provide that feedback.
I'm going to suggest that what Corey was maybe asking was, how does she know when to put, if we want a spreadsheet, how does she know when to put that together? And I will say, until we make a final vote on the comp plan update later in the year, we'll be continuing to take feedback. But in this particular, we had an open house saying, are the property owners in this area interested in expansion through their property or not? I would say if we give it a week, a suggestion, give it a week, Corey can then tabulate whatever information she has, and if more comes in, it certainly can be forwarded to the council. Is a week reasonable time for people to have heard about it and responded, so Corey can consolidate information for him down. It's certainly not the end of things, we're going to be continuing to be informing the public of other things related to comp plan update. Does this give Corey a chance to give us some feedback without just leaving it open forever?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Yeah, I agree with that, you know, this initial open house was for, you know, the residents of the properties that were directly affected by, if, you know, the possibility of those changes, so I think, yeah, we could be enough, and obviously, like you say, we are going to have additional feedback from others as we go, so for this initial one, I think that would be enough.
All right, anybody else?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
I guess then clarification for, so if I hypothetically lived in one of those new proposed areas, and I didn't get a chance to go to the meeting, and I don't get a chance to put in my, submit my input in the next five days, are we not going to accept my input?
That's not.
Okay, that's, I'm just trying to.
No, I would say, for the purposes of Corey being able to consolidate information from now till next Tuesday, whatever she receives through the weekend, she consolidates that, folds it to the council, to put in our packet for comp plan discussion. If somebody else comes in, says, I was out of town, but I want to lay in on this, or I heard about it later, we'll certainly consider that, but this way she can consolidate what we do have into one document, and then we can put it in our packet. I don't think we're ever going to close it off until we.
I guess I just want to clarify that in my mind.
No, it's winter time, people could be out of town, there's any number of things, so. So, that being said, a motion that we capture whatever comes in by, through the weekend for the January 16th, because Monday's a holiday, right? So, January 16th, and direct staff to consolidate that into a spreadsheet for the council's purposes.
I'll second that.
Motion, a second, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda, items 1.3 and 1.5 removed at this point.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinje.
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Let's make the, you had said 1.3, we're either in one pile of the discussion now or at the end of council items, we didn't actually say, so since it's here now, you want to just get it?
Thank you. On item 1.3, the information were provided by, city clerk had some links in there, and I know there was discussion at the workshop, I listened to the audio, but it did, so I would like to move that it be accepted as presented with the addition of the planning commission liaison to be kept at Jeff Pelon, Park and Rec liaison, Mary Rangel, Roden Bridge liaison, Dan Bryan, recycling quarter coordinator, Mary Rangel, and then there was the change under building official that the city of St. Francis would be removed in any of these readers' company members' input.
I'll second that.
A motion, a second, discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
The only thing I would like us moving forward is to actually get the input from the committees as well, as far as if they have a preference or any thoughts as far as who they would want their liaison to be, because obviously, that liaison is working directly with the committee, the committee should have some input on who that person should be.
All right, other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
I would, I would, I mean, that's an excellent idea, but committee members always have the opportunity to provide input to council, so let's, hopefully, they understand that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Last year, that was done, and it wasn't, we didn't abide by what that, one of the committees recommended, so just to remind you of that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
And it is up to the, it is the council's prerogative to vote, how they vote, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinje.
I think in future years, I would like the council to consider rotating the positions that way, because everybody, a greater knowledge of all the committees, what and what's going on, and it brings everybody up to speed, because I'm sure, like the watershed, for instance, I'm sure a lot of you in here have, don't have a really great idea of what really happens over there, and I think that'd be just a good idea, just if people would rotate around and get familiar with everything that's going on in the city of Malvin.
And we have, I have an opening on it, I stood on that for a little bit until they changed the dates, I agree. There's more going on there than people understand, and the cost and the benefit to it, but the opening may be a lot of rotate people in until we find a full time replacement.
And there's, there's a big push from Bowser and the DNR, and I'm right now, to keep adding more responsibilities to the water, to WMO, so.
Could you get us the schedule for the meetings for that? Send that to Corey?
It's typically always the first Tuesday unless we have a special meeting.
The first Tuesday, Park and Rec?
Yeah.
And that's always over at the other group?
Yeah.
What time?
7:00 o'clock.
So.
We actually have a meeting coming up, I think it's on the 22nd with Bowser of this month, at 7:00 o'clock in April. Yeah, it's on the 22nd.
So, from a standpoint, we all can attend, it's an open meeting, it's an open meeting, we can attend, but from a standpoint of voting, how does that work as city representative? Right now, you're our only representative.
Each city has, still have, had a two voting member, so.
So, we would have to appoint somebody to recognize as voting member?
Yes.
So, if we were to rotate different council members in there, we couldn't say, whatever council member's there, in addition, do you have a voting member, or?
Probably not, because there's liability insurance for that organization too, if you're trying to rotate any, on and on, that don't, yeah, wouldn't work very well.
I would encourage people to, to attend those meetings, and we talked about filling another position there, and note for future, Councilman Bettinje's request to consider rotating liaison responsibilities, so. All right, anything else on the resolution 2018-01? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
On resolution 2018-03, I would move that it be accepted as presented, other than under the Park and Rec Committee, I would ask that Dan Williams not be reappointed to the Park and Rec Committee, and if I can get a second, I'll speak to that.
I'll second that, so you can speak to it.
I, as an observer of the, of the committee, and observer and participant in the council meetings, over the years, I found Mr. Williams to be argumentative, disrespectful, and I don't believe that he portrays a positive reflection of the city. He's publicly stated information that's untruthful, disrespectful. I have seen him act in ways at the committee meetings that to me is demeaning, he demeans the other committee members, basically telling them that because they don't hang at the park, that they're not representing the residents, and that only he is, because he hangs at the park. I just don't think he's a good representative for the city.
All right, other discussion?
I don't agree with it, we have not gotten any feedback from the committee whatsoever, because we're just going off of what Mary, Councilman Rangel has said, you know, and I know that her self and Dan don't get along, so if I'm on a committee and I don't get along, it's somebody in the voting lot just to go. I don't think that's right, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
I, to Councilmember Rickert, it is not because I don't like Dan, it's behaviors that he portrays, he's a representative of the city, and in my opinion, based on what I've observed and read in council minutes and in committee minutes, he is disrespectful, he's untruthful, and he is demeaning to.
In your opinion?
I guess if you read some of the committee minutes, you'll see that committee members have said that what he has said is wrong, and that they do represent people. And if you read council meeting minutes, you'll, you'll see where he's been proven wrong in what he has publicly stated, and I just don't think that's a representative for the city.
Other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinje.
Oh, he, Dan has never been disrespectful to me, or in times of all, he disagrees or has a different opinion, I don't know, it's definitely comes at a different angle, but I don't think, I think the input coming from all sides or all directions is good. I don't think that he's really done nothing wrong that would harm the city in any way. He's done a lot of good things on the committee, a lot of good things for the city, he's done, volunteered a lot of time in the parks.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
And, and he does bring a different perspective, and it is good to have many perspectives, but again, it's, it's his behaviors that I think are not, or should not be reflective in the city. We had, earlier, we had a letter from another agency that discussed the behaviors of somebody on the watershed, and we were ready to pull him, and it was because he was vulgar and disruptive, and, and I see behaviors such as this of Mr. Williams, but it's the council who decides.
So, I'd like to clarify, when they make statements like that, he was somebody returning to the watershed, in their opinion, accused him of being so.
Correct.
It doesn't necessarily make it fact.
Correct, you are correct.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
I served as park liaison for a lot of years, and I never felt Mr. Williams was either vulgar or petty.
Well, yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
He's been vulgar at city council meetings, it's been a combination of both.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
Knowing that currently, the Park and Rec Committee only has three members on it, if one more was removed, that results in a temporary committee of only two members, with two, so with, with currently two open seats, you know, I would, I would see that if there were changes right now, then, you know, that would affect the performance of that committee, and how would that, how much productivity would be, would we be able to get out of that committee? I see, having been at Park and Rec meetings, I, you know, there is a definite, there's a difference in communication styles, but I think too, he, you know, that we would have that third person on that committee, so that the committee can, can do some work, and that, as I understand it, the 18th, the numbers would mean appointments for, for the current year, so I just have, would have a challenge removing, removing Mr. Williams from the committee when we are, we currently are having a hard time filling the two other seats.
Not saying one way or the other, I don't think the, the decision to keep somebody on if, as Councilmember Ringo says, they have been disruptive or, you go to the meetings, you know how they run, to say that somebody's better than nothing is not necessarily a good logic. I think that the openings that we have there, we've been advertising, one of them just came open. But I do think that it's imperative that the park committee understand the Park and Trail Plan, understand what, what we have in our comp plan as a task going forward, and I think it's important that the people on that committee support that, that they know the plan, they know the comp plan, they know the Park and Trail Plan, and they support that in addition to their own vested interest. So, I think the representation of the city, I think there is something to be said about professional representation. I think we want the best for all of our committees, committees and commissions, we want them to reflect us professionally, and when people come before them with requests, I think the expectation from the residents is that we've appointed people that represent us well. And so, I can see some of what Councilmember Ringo is saying there in some of the, not so much the personal, I think Councilmember Rickert was talking about, he was liaison there, and I think personally, Dan can be personable, but in representing the city in these things, is this the best choice? And, and to say that the committee would be down to two people at this point, you know, what's critical at this point, and what does, what does fresh eyes bring to the committees? I, you know, I just don't think it's, I think. Yeah, I just don't think it's...I think it's important to fill the seats with the right people, not just fill the seats, but put that way. Dan has got a different style, and it's well-known, so. For some, that's good, for some, that's not as enjoyable. Councilmember Ringo.
Mr. Mayor, again, I don't want it to be that Dan doesn't like me, I don't like Dan. What I'm looking at are defined instances where he has been untruthful in things that he has said either on council floor or on the committee floor, and I think that that does not reflect well on the city. One of the latest things was when they were talking about the smoking. There was a smoking at the park. There was a complaint or conversation on the Now the Milton Facebook page, and Mr. Williams made a comment at the meeting, "Well, that's one person and they're like them." And I can't remember the city or the state he said that person was from, so what does that make it, you know, what does that matter? I happen to know the person that made that complaint. That person grew up in Minneapolis, has been a friend of mine for many years. And so where he got that information from and presented it as truth, that kind of was the camel or the stud that broke the camel's back for me. I just think if we're going to have people represent the city, they should represent us in a professional manner, to be able to, when they say something, that it's truthful and that we can trust them to represent us well.
Well, I can say in my opinion that I don't believe everything that you always say. I don't always think it's truthful, so should we kick you out?
I'm an elected official, that's up to the residents.
Well, we could vote you out of the Park and Rec if we were backing for president liaison, same thing. It's your personal opinion.
Well, that was not an opinion. He stated as a fact that that person was not from here, and that person is from here, is living in Nowton for many, many years.
And I don't think that really has a whole...if that person wasn't a resident or is a resident, doesn't have a whole lot of bearing on what's going on.
All right. Anything new in your mind? So again, your motion was to adopt as presented except for that one position.
Correct.
All right. One last, any discussion? Standing and hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
Motion fails.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettin.
I'm making a motion to approve it as presented.
The motion is second. We've had our discussions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay?
Nay.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettin.
I'm making the motion to approve the data for the report.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
Once this vote has been taken, I have a motion in regards to the pay equity report.
All right. Any other discussion? Standing and hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
Based upon the city clerk's December 22, 2017 email, which provided the council with an updated compensation scale and warned of consequences of changing the rating numbers, I move that the council direct the city clerk to provide a report which outlaws...excuse me, outlines the acceptable process to be used if the council were to consider changes in functions associated with our existing titles as it relates to the pay equity report.
I'll second for discussion.
And motion is second. Let's have the discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
As I said, Ms. Luduser sent us an email explaining how the report is done, how it's...how the numbers are used, and warned us that if we were to start making changes, we would be in noncompliance and possibly could be fined. And what I would like as a council is for us to know what is the procedure that we would use if we were to choose to go forward and make any changes in the functions of those positions, so that if we did make changes, we would not be out of compliance and hence be fined.
Cory, do you follow that?
Somewhat. Yes and no.
So in your previous email, when you were alerting us to making sure that what we did was in compliance, in response to that, you set up a...the guidelines for Steve or the...you submitted Steve, who is a new employee, to fit into the report. Am I to understand that's along the lines of what you're saying, is if we make changes, we need to make sure they're consistent with the structure of the report so that we're compliant with the pay equity report?
Yes, and it's based off of what salary you have him set at and his job points based off of that, so it has to kind of fit in what Joe's is and what Eric's is and based off of the salary. So I think I kind of understand what she's saying, but when we submit it to pay equity, we have to tell them what we've used for a basis, and we have to give them our pay range. And so if now you're changing things out of that realm, that's where you could come out of compliance because you're telling them this is what you're using to...with your job points. And since we've used the same job point system for the last, what, four or five pay equity reports, and you start messing around with some things, if I'm understanding what you're asking, with the point value system, they want to know where...why? Where did you come up with this now?
Well, and that's, I guess that's what I'm looking at is, we've used the same for many years. If we were to make changes in responsibilities, job titles, pay, how do we do that appropriately so that we are still in compliance? Do we do an...do we send in an amended report? Does it just get reflected on the next year?
It would be reflected on the next report, and you would have to have the documentation where you came up with the new point system and the new range to go with it. So every time you do it, you have to have a new...because it asks where did your...did you guys get a salary survey done, or was it something that you came up with? And how does it reflect on the new job point system for that position? So, no, you don't give a new one during this time, it's when you do your next report, which is in three years.
In three years?
Mm-hmm. Every three years we do it.
All right. So then if we were to make changes a year and a half down the road, would we...is there the possibility of being found out of compliance and...
No, because once you're in compliance, because it adds the end of the date of January or December 31st.
Previous year?
Yes.
And in reality, that's part of your responsibilities, is as we discuss positions, to go back and look at the structures there and say, "This is how we justify it."
Right.
This is why we put Steve where we put him, and you provide the documentation. So when we do the pay equity report in three years, you say, "This is how we made that decision." And we rely on you as our clerk treasurer to guide us in that, to say, "If you guys are going to go there, you don't have the supporting documentation you're going to need."
Or, yeah, or if you're...
Or this is how you can get in the right place.
Yeah, or if you're looking at this pay, and let's say you picked another person and that pay was higher than, let's say, Eric, but yet the duties were a little less, then you could be in noncompliance because his point system, if Eric's point systems are higher, but you're paying somebody else whose point system are lower or higher wage, that's where it throws you out.
And that's what you do, is you observe, you make sure, you monitor, point system and pay structure. It's the whole, you're getting some extra pay to somebody on a lower point system. And that's what the pay equity report's going to look at every three years, to say. And it could really, I think, started out to make sure that there was equity with genders in particular, because you could have a female doing something of greater responsibility or equal responsibility but not making the same money. And it started out with that, you're saying, but it applies to everybody. If they've got more responsibilities and get less pay, you need to explain why.
Well, and I will withdraw my motion, then. I just, I guess, needed a better explanation because if we were to make changes, I didn't want to find us out of compliance and getting fined.
No, it says that December 31st, 2017, so.
I withdraw my motion.
All right. All right, we had the discussion at the workshops about our feasibility reports. Think that we are going to move these to the joint meeting with the Road and Bridge. Understood, right?
We talked about that, right? Knowing that both liking having some more information coming, well, as well as getting more information from our financial advisor.
So I accept a motion to move this discussion to the Road and Bridge next week.
So.
What's the second? Any other discussion?
Is that for BNC?
BNC, correct. Well, I'm assuming your motion, is that for BNC?
Both using the motion, yes.
Both, you may as well just go through both.
Okay. For BNC, move to discussion, we're still waiting for information from the healers and chain. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And D. Councilmember Brian.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to continue this RCA to February and to have Cory, you know, provide to the council further review of the overall financials to determine the feasibility of these bonds to those areas before the next council meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. Standing and hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
I am moving, like, I...right in RCA, I would like to amend a little bit of what the request is. I amend my motion to read that I move the council directs internal staff to continue preparing an ongoing quarterly meeting, so January to March, April to June, July to September, October to November, December, cumulative reports with an effective date of May 1, 2016, which will include all costs associated, time and material with the hockey rink and now the recreational skating service. And so directed differently by the council, the cumulative report should be provided to the council under the consent portion of the city council meeting agenda at the January, April, and October council meetings.
Second for discussion.
All right. Motion is second. Let's discuss.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
The only question that I had was, and we kind of brought it up at the workshop with Mary was, do we really need a quarterly report? I mean, obviously, odds are there's not going to be anything done in the summer months. Would we be better off doing, you know, figuring out the dates, you know, and doing a, you know, a couple of different reports or a single report? I agree with you, we need to gather costs to figure out exactly how much we got going into it and what its cost means. But to have a quarterly report, especially during the summer months when there's nothing going to be going on, it seems kind of to be fruitless to me.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
Councilmember Rickert, I believe in a quarterly report, it's consistent, and we know when it's expected. If there isn't information to be included into the April to June or July to September, that'll be a very easy report. It's basically the numbers that were provided the previous quarter with a statement that says there were no expenses during this time period. But I believe that that allows us to have an ongoing look at what it's costing us, especially when our budgeting meetings are, I think we started in June of last year...
Yep.
...and went in through to September. And so it's important that we have those and any projections as to what the remaining...remainder of the year would be, so that when we are looking at budgets, we can budget into the next year. At this point, we've never budgeted anything for the hockey rink and/or the recreational skating. It's all just been expenditures with no...basically after the...not after the facts expenditures, but expenditures put forward to us and not having looked at it in a budget, in a budget...looking at it through the view of the budget. I believe quarterly reports are important.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettin.
Originally, this was asked for because we needed it for budgeting purposes, and we budget once a year. I think an annual report once a year is enough, and, you know, we have...we used to have two full-time staff and now some couple part-time. Right now, we're down to one full-time and one temporary staff person. You know, all these things take time, and I realize, yeah, that there's nothing going on, but it's still another report that needs to be done. It takes time, and I don't think it's necessary. It's just like everything else, we get a...when the budget's put together, we seal on the past year's budget what we spent. It's an annual report, the numbers are there. So for them to create four new reports just for the hockey rink, I think that's just more than us did. One annual report should be enough.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
I disagree. I believe that this is a new thing for us. Again, we've never looked at anything in a budget-related fashion associated with the rink. And we've spent considerable amount of money in material, you know, product, labor, and I think it's important that we look at that. When we look at our Park and Rec Fund, we don't know how much of that has been based on expenses of the hockey rink. We don't know, you know, this year what we're going to have in labor in it. I believe quarterly reports are important, and we can use those at our budgeting meetings,
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
I was trying to think of some sort of compromise, but I'm going, well, June's probably...if we're doing budgeting in June, June's probably not the right month to have it finished. It's almost a seasonal type of thing. And if you did a semi-annual report, it wouldn't necessarily be June and December because it might be out of season, so to speak. It's good to keep the hockey and the recreational skating expenses separate, at least for now. I'm just wondering if councilmember Ringo would be opposed to doing a semi-annual cumulative
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ringo.
Councilmember Brian, what do you suggest as being a semi-annual, what month periods?
Well, we'd probably look to include...well, and that might not even work if we're starting to put up things in September and we're finishing up in March.
Like, we took down in May last year. That becomes the problem because it isn't a semi-annual if we're flattening or...you know, I can see where there's, you know, the extra responsibility. You put it in a cycle and say, you know, once a quarter, we get report from the various That is a problem if you do it April 1st and October 1st or whatever. From April to October, you might have some activity in May and nothing all summer, and from October to April, you're going to have, pretty much should have, most of your expenses. expenses. You know, how much more rigor is there to say there's a quarterly report and if there's no expenses, there's no expenses if there are? It's nice to know you're spending something in off-season as well. How much more rigor is, is two more reports than the four? Two reports versus four? I think it does become a problem. What are the months of the semi-annual? Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, we'll vote on the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Adam F.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
I'd like to make a motion for myself to work directly with staff to, or to write a preliminary change to the current ordinance for how we charge for emergency services. Second or late, obviously later, for the council.
All right, we have motion to second, discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainbow.
I guess I, I missed the last part because you were.
It's just for, just for, obviously, for further review of the council. I want, I want, what the council's permission to rewrite for our review. Now, obviously, we're not going to approve it until it's reviewed by the council.
I guess I question that because when I listened to the recording of the workshop, I heard it's, the agreement was that we are going to schedule a meeting with council to discuss changes.
Just like your previous motion to change it a little bit, so did this.
So I just want to clarify.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
If we were to have, well, we, we should have a discussion with the council, but it'd be good to have a, at least a template or a plan to, sort of ideas going, going forward to, or as a place to start.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Yeah, just if I, if I take the time to work with staff to write something, obviously, it's not getting approved, we have to discuss it, we go through it, we make whatever changes, the entire council needs necessary. So by me taking the initiative to do it, technically, doesn't prove anything.
What I hear you saying is, you could do it yourself and present an RCA or templates and here's what I recommend, and you're asking basically to work with Cory and Chief Coroner, maybe, to say, you know, what's the input there so we have something more than just your opinion on the template? And because we are careful in how we direct staff, we want to make sure staff knows the council has authorized you to work with them on the information.
Correct.
Is that the way the council understands it? Okay, with that understanding, do we have any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
I'd like to make a motion to set a fixed date of our November council meeting to either to review and so choose to award a COLA increase for staff. And that would require staff to have gathered information for us prior to that meeting for if we can have that to our, for our October council meeting.
And so you're saying that the, you want a firm date for a yes, no, go, no decision would be first council meeting in November?
Correct.
And staff to have supporting documentation for the October meeting?
Correct.
All right, have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Bryan.
I'll second for discussion.
All right, second, let's have a discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Bryan.
I'm, I just would like some clarification from Councilmember Rickert, how this policy's different from the existing administrative policy review that is, if there's any changes to, to your proposal versus what's in the administrative policy currently about reviewing the COLA in November?
Well, obviously, it's, in my opinion, it's actually making us act on something because obviously, we haven't done it since I've been part of the council in, in, you know, the last 10 years. As far as I know, where staff has gotten one COLA increase. So again, this is something that, in my opinion, forces us to actually take action and do something.
Mr. Mayor, I'm confused because our current policy says that we're already be reviewing it in November. So how is this, how, again, how is this different?
The reviews are to be done in November.
Yeah. The COLA would actually be evaluated in November. My question to you, have we done that? I'm not saying we have or haven't, and it's not saying that we can't refine the existing policy. Now, we're going to do that so that it gets put on the agenda. Whose responsibility is it to have it, have it there in November since it's already in our policy?
You're saying since it's in the policy, which you're recommending, that we adhere to our policy?
Mm-hmm.
Which we have to either way, whether we make this motion or.
Which we haven't though, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainbow.
Question I have with it is the time period, the October, November, and again, going back to our budget. We're doing our budget hearings, meetings in June, July, August, and September. Should that not be a part of those discussions? Because if we're going to provide a COLA increase and looking at your supplemental information, this COLA increase is irregardless, regardless of performance review, so there's also a possibility of an increase based on performance reviews, how I read this. And if we're not making these decisions till after we've decided on our budget, I don't think that's the right way to do it.
Yeah, we could easily change the, the date for integration from staff to prior to budget cost.
It would seem to make, it would seem to make sense to do that within the budget cycle, to have the recommendation. I mean, we do have it in the policy to, to do it in, in November, and then we could keep the November date and enforce it, which is really what you're trying to memorialize here is, let's be specific, okay, we need to, we need to abide by the policies we have so in November we make that decision. But I think the, the discussion needs to be had during the budget cycle so it doesn't come around too loud, gee, we're, kind of discussion every year is, where was that in the budget? So if we do the evaluation of the cost of living in the summertime when we're to budget and, and we have the decision by November, because, well, that'll be before, it'll be after we submitted our budget to the county and it'll be locked in before we put our final to the residents in December. It'll be consistent with our policy. Now, we don't have to add a new policy. We adhere to the policy we have, we add the evaluation to take place and staff to give us that information as part of our budget discussions in the summer. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So would you want to amend your motion accordingly?
Yes.
All right, who's second then? Dan? Oh, you're second. You agree to that second? So keep the November for our policy?
Mm-hmm.
And have staff provide as part of the budget discussions what they have research finds for cost of living in the summertime.
What, this is what we're going to look at, possible, another amendment, how, I guess the question is, it's been in the policy that it's been November, is there anything else we need to do to make sure that it's on, just on the agenda?
Yeah, put an RCA in there so we can't have done. I, I think that's incumbent upon us to do. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Benjamin.
Yeah, I thought last month when we talked about this COLA thing, it was going to be a RCA to look at giving the COLA to the employees this year and how we were going to pay for that. That was my understanding from last month's meeting, but this is different because RCA isn't what I thought it would be. And I think we should look, be looking at that. And Dan Bryan, I know we had money left over that's in the checkbook from 2015 and 16. One year was $98,491, 2016 was $73,708. I think we should look at, given our employees' COLA, we only had one raise in the last 10 years, and, and if the council wants it, we can even have staff figure out what that would cost the city for three, four employees we have, so we don't have to find out how much of that.
Well, I think that's a separate issue and I think that's a discussion we had previously is, the, the challenge was come up with a proposal and I think Councilmember Rickert did to, to move forward on this, and the challenge was, what is that cost? Come up with RCA to explain that rather than spontaneously make the request. So I think Councilmember Rickert did what he had suggested and wanted to lock in the November, make sure that we're, we're getting that done, and have staff evaluate. The only change we made was to, rather than do it in October, do it during the budget cycle. I think it makes sense to have those discussions proactively, not reactively at the end of a meeting. So I think for, as this one is presented, the motion in the second here, what you propose is, is a separate issue and I think needs the documentation to go with it, in my opinion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
That's the discussion we had last month was RCA to give the employees a COLA this month and where that money was going to come from.
And, and the discussion was to put that RCA together, which Councilmember Rickert did. If you wanted it to be different, then you would have needed to put a known RCA to make it different.
That's my point. You went off on a different tangent. That's my point, RCA that we were talking about that should be coming before tonight was the one to look at, give the employees a COLA and where would that money come from?
And that was, that was your understanding of, of your interest at that time. The challenge was if somebody has something specifically on, put in a request for council action, which Councilmember Rickert did. And, and it's different than, than what your understanding, what you were asking last month. But I do think it captures what the discussion that Councilmember Rickert had was to abide by the policies and give staff the chance to come up with some documentation to, to support adjustments, separate from performance review.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
And I agree with that, but there's nothing saying that we can't do a secondary motion tonight asking or directing staff to get us the information to find out if there are funds available for a COLA increase. Now, and, or if we were to award one, if, where that money would come from and where we, if there is funds available to do that.
So two, the motion is on the floor, do we have any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
Then in conjunction with that, I would like to make a motion to direct staff to get information to the council of COLA rates and if we do have funds currently available for some type of COLA increase.
I'll second that.
All right, motion to second, discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainbow.
What are the parameters of getting COLA rates? What, what is our direction going to be to staff as to size of cities, like positions, like budgets, you know, contracts that automatically allow for COLAs versus non-contract cities? You know, what are, what are the parameters that we want to set for this information?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rickert.
I would imagine we use the same criteria that we always have as far as like cities and, you know, when we go up for pay range, pay scales. I don't see, you know, why there'd be much difference from that aspect.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainbow.
I, I, you provided the information from, from last, from 2016, and when I look at these cities, I, I don't see them as like cities to us. We have Monticello, Arden Hills, Fairmont, which has about 1,100 residents, Canyon, that's a much smaller population. I wasn't able to find their budget on the internet. There was Ham Lake, which has 16,000 residents. City of St. Joseph was probably the closest to us and that was 6,700 residents. So I, and I know it's hard to find, but it, it should be somewhat close to what we are. We also had the social security cost of living. Well, we're not on social security, well, at least not yet. We're not on social security and our employees are not on social security. But I don't think those are relevant numbers.
I'm going to go back to, you know, the discussion we had last month. To me, it still seems incomplete, we're being asked to give direction without the forethought of documenting something. We have some numbers here that have cities of varying size and responsibilities. We have police unions, we have exempt status, non-exempt, we have union employees, and it really is, you can say this city might be similar in size to ours, we don't know about responsibilities, we don't know what their base pay is, so what a 3% raise or a lot of 2% to 2.5% raise in this city versus that city, what difference is made in the base pay? And that's why I think the, the important thing was to come in with some research that says, from an RCA standpoint, here's the specifics we're asking staff to do. It's, and it seems like sometimes, anytime we ask staff to do something, we're reminded how few there are and how much there is to do and how much reverberating them. On the other hand, we say go out there without clear direction, gather some information that we can debate later as to its veracity and, and its usefulness to our city. So I really do think it, it needs to have a request for council action that thinks of those things. What are the, the specific parameters we're asking them to go out and get? Because what, it seems like we keep doing this, having Cory and her, or her staff to go out there and, and ask vague questions of people. You can see it in a lot of the answers, well, here's kind of what we do. But we're not exactly sure what information we're asking for and we don't have a process. So I, I think that, that given that and in light of that, we're asking Cory to, to do this for the budget, I think we'd be better off saying, let's put some thought into what we're asking Cory to actually collect for us for our budget cycle this year. Because we know, other than going into previous years' budgets and saying, here's money we had left over, as someone wanted to do, we didn't plan for that in this year's budget cycle. So I think we'd be better off making sure that we give Cory good parameters so we discuss it in our budget cycle this summer. We aren't wasting her time and spending a lot of time debating whether this is pertinent information or not.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Benjamin.
A lot of the information's already what she gave us this year. If you look at all them cities, and they're not all, you're not going to find one exactly like us. There's some closer, some a little bigger, they're a little farther away, but they're all consistently given a 2% to 3% COLA, consistently. It doesn't matter what size, cost of living is the cost of living. So from what I, you, Mr. Mayor, you want to go again, another year, but all given our city employees are raised?
I, I would like to understand the cost to the city and I would like to understand the comparison to where base pay is in these cities and what we're doing. Yes, I think having the information. Base pay says nothing.
It's, it's here. The pay ranges for all the different cities is here. Cost of living is here. It's all right here. And you could, she could take this information, she could figure out what it would cost for each employee, but give a range of like 2% to 3%. So we'd have numbers to look at. It's there. And if you look at all pay scales, now, because we have, there has been a COLA given for 10 years, over 10 years. Our pay scales are. for 10 years, over 10 years, our pay scales are way out of whack, they're way lower than everybody else's.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raynor.
The Councilmember Bettinger's comment about being out of whack, I was going to wait until we talked about the deputy clerk position, but we had gone out for a bid to do a wage study, and our city clerk mentioned it, I can't remember if it was November or December meeting, that the council voted not to do that. Had we done that at that time, we would have that information, and it would have been done by a professional organization that had the ability to go out and look for like cities, like functions, so that we know we were comparing apples to apples versus not knowing what we're comparing to. And I believe the council did a disservice to itself and our employees by not voting to go forward with that. That report would have served us for many years, and when it came time to, they say for five to eight years, look at it again, it would have been much easier for me to do it again, and we'd have that information. But council voted no to do that, and so we don't have that information. And, you know...
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
And why did we vote no for that? Because it was brought up, we didn't have budget to have that study done, we didn't have a line item for that to have that study done, we had no money to do it. And that, and the amount that they wanted to do that study was probably more than what it would cost to give our employees a raise.
But it would have...
And it was you, Mayor, Council, Raynor, that brought up that we didn't have money in the budget to do that study. Oh, yes, we did.
I guess it is surprising that when the budget talks are going on, it really does seem to be the time to either budget for a professional study done, or an independent study to be done, or staff to do the study. And I don't know why, for whatever reason, when we're talking about wages and everything else during the budget cycle, this doesn't come up. It seems to come up after the fact, and then we always debate, we didn't prepare for it when we had the opportunity. And I think that's what we need to do a better job on, is preparing for it and justifying it at the time, so it's proactive and not reactive in the motion. It keeps getting us in a situation where if you want to be fiscally responsible and proactive, it always pits you against the staff, you know, the council decision against the staff, when I think it's really trying to be fiscally responsible, as well as competitive in our wages. And I think that we do a disservice in not being prepared that way, but I also think it's a disservice to do it reactively.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raynor.
I, to Councilmember Bettinger, I have the January 12, 2016 council meeting minutes here, and it was Councilmember Bettinger said they don't have it in the budget to pay for the wage study this year. Why don't we move forward with the motion at hand? We can always do the study next year. So I was not the one that said that there wasn't the money. We were in January of the budget year, we could have found that money. And again, I think we did a disservice for not going, moving forward with that. And we do purchase things that don't have line item budgets. We've got hockey boards out there, we've got lights out there, that was never a line item budget, and what we moved forward with that, so...
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
Some park items come out of a park improvement fund, that aren't line item budget, you could line item budget, but you don't have it. That's an improvement to the park, and they come out of the park improvement fund. And originally, when the proposal, when we, the motion was to go off a proposal for our wage study, you actually voted against it because we didn't. And that's where it first came up, you voted against it because we didn't have money in the budget to do it. And later on, yes, you did vote for. But originally, you were in opposed, and so you went, you flipped, you went for.
It sounded valuable what it was when we got the proposals.
And tonight, this motion here is not to approve a raise tonight, it's just to find out, so you can see what the actual numbers are, if we were to give a 2% or 3% COLA raise to our employees, what it would cost the city, and do we have the funds to do that? I believe we do, but this way, the numbers are all up front, everybody knows what we're voting on next month with that information. That's all this motion is doing, is to get, collect, put more information together and make that decision, whether we give employees a raise or we don't.
Any other discussion? Cory, could you read that motion back, please?
All I had was that he made a motion to direct staff to get information for COLA rates, and if there's any funds available for them.
How would you interpret that since it's going to fall into your lap?
I guess it would have been just the same way that we have in the past, like Mr. Bettinger, it's dead, is that, for the most part, when you're comparing other cities, they're all basically giving about the same COLA. You're not comparing that city to that city, it's what are the COLA increases that the cities are giving. And being on the listserv with the clerks and that, and the treasurers, there's emails going back and forth all the time asking what COLA increases and stuff are that people are giving for their staff, whatever year, they're not asking what size is your city, and how many staff do you have, and can you give me your base wages in order to determine that? It's what are your COLA increases that you're giving for the year?
And would you also interpret that to say, these, this level increase, 2%, 2.5%, whatever it looks like people are doing, would cost the city?
Would what?
Would you also interpret that motion to be figuring out what those percentages would cost the city?
Yes.
On an annual basis?
Yeah.
And where in the budget those funds would come from?
Well, I mean, I guess I would come up with the figures of what it would cost the city, I think it's, you guys would have to decide where you would want it to come from. I don't make that decision.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Workshop, we talked about not amending our pay range at this time, but giving latitude to the people doing the interview to recommend if there is a candidate that appears to be outside the scale to make recommendations and decisions accordingly. Is that an accurate representation of our discussion at the workshop?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raynor.
Although I wasn't at the workshop, I did listen to it, and at the workshop, it was mentioned that we'd already determined who was going to do the interviews, and there was discussion on that, but there was never a motion. I had actually made a motion, and we determined we would wait until we get another month into the process before we determined who would be on that interview committee, so that still needs to take place.
All right, so regarding the question here, the range, is it council's opinion that we would have the parties involved weigh in on that decision?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I'll make a motion to approve the same committee that did it the last time, Mayor Fiala and Councilmember Rickert and Cory, and then based on your findings from interviews, come back with a recommended person and a period.
I'll second that.
Motion and second. The, for discussion purposes here, we had an offer from our previous deputy clerk who was willing to help us in the interview process, because she's actually had the job, she knows the responsibilities, and knows the conditions, feels that she can help us find a good candidate, if we would be willing to include her in the interview process. So as we're recommending the...
I'll amend my motion to include her if she's willing to help out.
All right.
Take it.
So we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raynor.
If there are no additional items, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.